Before I was born.
All right, I'd like to call this meeting, Chaska City Council meeting to order at seven sixteen. Can you all rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I should clarify too, it's for Monday, February third. All right, Elise, will you call her up, please?
Councilor Hatfield.
Here.
Councilor Bash.
Here.
Councilor Chevlin.
Here.
Councilor Graff.
Here.
Mayor Hubbard.
Here.
All right, thank you, everybody that's in the audience and our YouTube viewership for waiting. We had some commission interviews and they kind of went right up to the end and we are going to make our appointments today. So we just needed a moment to discuss over things. So with that, can I have someone adopt the agenda if there's any corrections or changes that need to be made? Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the agenda.
All right, motion by Councilmember Graff.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hatfield. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, then the agenda did. All right, that next brings us to visitor presentation. So if there's anybody in the audience here that is here to speak up, speak to the council, that's not on the agenda, please feel free to come forward, otherwise you will move right along, all right. Look at me like I've got three eyeballs. Okay, so moving right along, next on the agenda is approval of the previous meeting minutes for January sixth, twenty twenty five, which I feel like is incorrect because it was just last week's meeting minutes.
Let me make sure what is in your packet.
Is not correct.
That's January sixth, that's not correct, you already adopted that, so there's no meeting minutes for you.
That's what I was gonna say, yeah.
Right along and do that next meeting. All right, next that brings us to consent items. These are items that generally need little to no discussion, but we certainly can pull them off if anybody wants to discuss or if anybody has any questions, otherwise. And entertain a motion.
Motion to adopt the consent items.
All right, motion by Councilmember, uh, Benish.
Okay.
Wow.
I was gonna say her name and I was like, that's not right, that's not right. Second by Mayor Hubbard, all right, um, any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay, say nay. All right, and items passed, all right, moving right along to our action items. So eight A is the commission appointments. Um, she, uh, cause I can get all of them. So we have some various open positions that were filled, we had a lot of great applicants. We had so many good applicants this round, it was amazing to kind of recap for our openings that needed to be filled. So on our planning commission, we have four open positions, oh, thank you, I needed the numbers. I have the other thing. On our parks and rec, we have four openings, although one has to be a student. And then on our human rights commission, we have two openings, one for the student position and one for an alternate position. And then for heritage preservation, we had four openings, so, um. We had a lot of discussion, does anybody, does anybody up here want to reflect or talk about anything at all in regards to this?
Yeah, I'll mention a couple of things. This was a really strong group of commission candidates, I just want to thank the candidates that were applicants that put in their name for their commissions, because really truly like in the six years now that I've been doing this, has been one of the harder years to figure out where we put everyone, because I think our goal is always to try and give as many people an opportunity as possible to be on a commission, and this was, this was a hard year to do that. So, um, just thanks everyone for being really strong applicants and really coming and sharing about themselves. Certainly, you know, I think parks was exciting in that there truly was three people returning and only three spots for, um, I wanted to say adults, but non-student spots, um, and so that, that made it tough when we had so many good applicants and, and planning truly a ton as well, so it was just, um, just a tough year for that, so.
Yeah, I echo the comments of Councilmember Hatfield, it's, I've done this several years now and some were like putting a second ad out there and telling people because we need applicants. And it's really hard to tell good candidates that we don't have a spot, so we really try hard to move things around. But I will also mention that life happens, so sometimes you may not have a spot tonight and you may have a spot in the future. So like I said, for those that may fall into that boat, we have your contact information and we won't lose it, uh, because I think we just appreciate and thanks for people stepping up to volunteer. And like I said, sometimes it's just, we have too many and it's hard when someone says, hey, I want to help serve my city to say, can you just hold, and usually it is just, just to hold because opportunities, commissions or task force, you know, or other volunteer events that come through, so there are opportunities out there. So I just again echo those thoughts, really good candidate pool, a lot of good perspectives and a lot of good background. I'm excited where we landed.
And I think just to follow up on that, again, great candidates, but I also am very energized to see so many people from our community wanting to get involved and so many people wanting to give back to the community. That obviously means you're somewhat satisfied with your community, you have big ideas for where it should go next. You enjoy working with people in the community and giving your opinion and, and so I just think it's great when people are happy enough with their community that they're interested in getting involved and giving back. And I think that tells all of us that things are on a good path and we continue to look to all of you to keep us, you know, going to where we need to go.
I will echo all of that, a lot of good candidates, really hard decisions. But again, very exciting to see people wanting to get out here and work for the community and be a voice for people that might not think that they have one, but even if it is just your neighbor, I think that's, that's special and that's what makes what we do work, so, yeah.
Yes, um, I'm in agreeance with all the council members that it's, it's really reflective of our community that so many people are passionate about it, wanting to step up and serve and play a bigger role in the community. And I also think too, that even if, um, because we had limited openings versus the number of applications, that, yeah, as the, as the term goes, sometimes people have to drop out for certain reasons. And so it's, um, there's always a, you know, availability from time to time, but also that there are other opportunities in the community to give back as well, that, uh, you know, there's always different levels of engagement and, and, um, different, um, uh, community events that are happening that, that go on. So with that being said, uh, we have to talk through each of the commissions individually here as a block. Um, and what, what I'll do is I will list off the, um, motion and, uh, we'll, we'll take the motion in the second and then we'll, we'll vote on it. So we'll start with the planning commission, so, um, the planning commission members, uh, I would entertain a motion to have Carol Assen, Todd Urbanski, Sarah Rosted and Scott Saylor, uh, if anybody would like to. So moved.
All right, so motion by Councilmember Hatfield.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Benish, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay.
All right, and then next is the Park and Recs Commission. Um, we have, uh, three open positions with the student position not being filled at this time. And so I would entertain a motion to have Terry Schwerm, Elizabeth, Elizabeth Weinveen and Mike Hoyer added to, uh, the commission.
Motion.
All right, uh, motion by Councilmember Benish.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Graff, uh, any discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, yeah, we'll be timed, let's move on. Okay, so moving right along, we have our human rights commission, we had one, um, alternate member opening and one student member opening, and so I would entertain a motion to have Kichi Duffy be the, um, alternate um, and the student representative opening be Ju Higahi.
So moved.
Okay, mo- motion by Councilmember Graff.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Chevlin, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, all right, and then that carries. Moving right along, we have our heritage preservation committee, we have four open positions for this commission. I would entertain a motion for, uh, Chandra Nagasetti, uh, Prescott Philip, Phillips, uh, Aaron Doopy and Caleb Snyder.
So moved.
All right, motion by Councilmember Hatfield.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Benish, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries, all right, and that fills out our commissions. Um, again, thank everybody for applying, it was a really challenging decision, lots of good applicants, so. All right, that moves us right along to appointment, oh, of the twenty twenty five Parks and Rec Commission Chair and Vice Chair.
So Mayor Councilor, the, uh, the park board does annually, uh, come together to make recommendations to the, uh, city council for the, uh, chair and the vice chair position. At their, uh, January fourteenth meeting, uh, they made the recommendation that, uh, Jason Branch, uh, be, uh, supported for the, uh, commission chair and that Elizabeth Weinveen, uh, be appointed for the vice chair.
All right, um, any discussion or questions at all from anybody?
No questions, I just want to recognize Jason and Liz, because they've been a tremendous part of that, um, board and appreciate them stepping up to be chair and vice chair, um, even tonight as Liz shared the reasoning for reapplying and that being so meaningful and transparent, I just really appreciate their contributions. They always seem to be willing to jump on any subcommittee and they're, I always see them at community events and, um, just really appreciate their efforts, so wanted to recognize them real quick while we had this opportunity.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree, they, um, they have given a lot and contributed greatly, so. All right, with that, I'll, I'll entertain a motion, uh, to recommend, do we have to do them separately or together?
Uh, I do each one separately.
Okay, so let's first make a motion for recommendation for a city council appointment for the twenty twenty five Park and Recs Commission Chair, uh, for Jason Branch.
So moved.
Uh, motion by Councilmember Graff.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Chevlin, uh, any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, uh, opposed, same sign, carries, all right, second, uh, entertain a motion for recommendation for city council appointment of the twenty twenty five Park and Recs Commission for Vice Chair Elizabeth Weinveen, uh.
So moved.
All right, uh, motion by Councilmember Benish.
Second.
And second by Councilmember Chevlin, any discussion? All right, um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, all right, carries, wonderful. Moving right along to, I think, bills. Does anybody have any questions on these bills?
No questions, but I was, how many bills there were, well, I guess it's the first one of the month, but I was like, we just did this. Why is there a million more pages?
That is very true, but that's kind of how it works, right? All right, well, I would entertain a motion to approve the bills.
So moved.
All right, motion by Councilmember Hatfield.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Benish, all right, uh, any discussion? Otherwise, go ahead and roll call, please.
Councilor Hatfield.
Yes.
Councilor Bash.
Yes.
Councilor Chevlin.
Yes.
Councilor Graff.
Aye.
Mayor Hubbard.
Yes.
I'll do it every time.
You were gonna do that in honor of somebody. All right, okay, so, well, that's wonderful, that moved right along and I just lost my page. Okay, so I think next up is, uh, other business, um, let's start with Councilmember Hatfield.
Yeah, so just a couple of quick things, since we did this meet a week ago. Just a reminder, the downtown business meeting is on February fourteenth, so definitely wanting businesses downtown that are part of that area to join that meeting with Max Musicant, um, gonna be there, some updates on some road construction at forty-one and ten, um, so it'll be a big meeting, so seven thirty here in the chambers on the fourteenth. And then along the same lines of business, I just want to, um, congratulate our economic development coordinator Julie Grove on her first, um, Chaska Business Newsletter, which I was obsessed with, um, and it just was fantastic. So, um, thanks Julie for putting that together, um, and you know, there's business spotlight in there, so if businesses are interested in being spotlighted in there, um, resources, uh, there's a survey about, um, how the economy is impacting your business, um, new business spotlight, so lots going on there, so you can email Julie if you're not on the list to get on the list, um, or give her a call, but just want to say really good job, because that was pretty exciting to get in my inbox. I don't think I've ever read an email so fast, I was just really excited to see it and I know she works hard.
Surprise.
Yeah, it was really nice, I had no idea, so, um, yeah, it was just really good, so, great job there, um. And then we all got our invites to the Highway forty-one, ten project public meeting. I would say that this is a meeting most residents of Chaska should attend, um, just to make sure you're aware, because it is such a major thoroughfare in our community that you, it's gonna be different to get around town next summer. And so I just highly encourage everyone, it's at the Chaska Community Center, um, from four thirty to six on the, on February nineteenth, so I just really, really encourage people to attend that, just so you can see kind of the different phases, um, you know, when things are gonna be open, closed, how you're gonna get around, and like I said, it's such a major area, it's quite literally the middle of our city, so, um, I just really encourage people to attend that, that's in the Brick City Banquet Room, so you can kind of enter either from the main entrance or the theater entrance, and if you go in, take a left from the theater, take a right from the main entrance and it's in that hallway, so, um, yep, we're voting, is if you vote there or, you know, the other. So I always like to tell people that, because I'm one that I don't like to go to things if I don't know where I'm going. So now you all know where you're going in the community center, so you can come to this meeting.
One thing to point out about this one is, you know, they've had a lot of open houses that have been to like get input into it.
This is.
This is, like, the contracts, what?
Right, this is what's happening.
Yeah, so this is what's happening, so it really gives people an opportunity to understand where detours will be, how long they'll last, what the phasing will be, i- it's really, how do I survive this, this construction period?
Especially with eighty-second Street being under construction as well, so it's important to know what roads you cannot navigate around town.
Well, and it's such a busy intersection for buses and all that, getting to schools and stuff, so to know those alternate routes would be very helpful.
Perfect, that was all I had.
Okay.
I think.
Uh, I don't have a lot, I just, uh, this past weekend, we went to the ice fishing tournament hosted by the Fire Relief Association, which was awesome, it's my first time going with my wife and we had a great time seeing everybody out there and although there, sounds like there wasn't a lot of fish to be had, it was, uh, it was just a good time, there were a lot of people. I mean, the lake had.
The winner caught a pretty nice fish, though.
What's that?
The winner caught a pretty nice fish.
Yeah, yeah, that's, I, all more power to him. I might actually participate next year. Not that I know anything about ice fishing, but to see that there was equipment there that you could use and, um, get involved and do it, I, I think it'd be a blast, so it, it looked like a lot of fun and we were glad to experience that, so.
Wonderful, awesome, all right, Councilor Chevlin.
I mean, other than to say thank you again to all the people who applied for the commissions and just, you know, I was overwhelmed by the talent and the passion for the city in this room, it was amazing. Um, and then, you know, also I would just like to give a shout out to the mayor here, she's been doing such a good job at leading us and I don't think we ever really say that to her, so publicly I wanted to give the mayor a little credit.
Well, thank you, I'm trying.
Second.
I'll get, I'll get the procedural things down, but yeah, no, it's, it's been, it's been good so far, thank you.
My turn.
Yeah, oh yes, okay, yes, go for it.
Um, you know, I, I wrote it down, because I was looking at the forty-one and Inglis Boulevard and, um, I just wanted to comment and I'll say, put this on the record and then I'm sure someone will disagree and that's fine, that's what healthy, is healthy about everything. But I think the, one of the things that I've observed, because I've found myself navigating forty-one north a lot recently, uh, past Costco and to Costco, a lot of the feedback we heard was a lot of concern about traffic on forty-one with Costco and a lot of like, this is the worst idea, you know, and sometimes you take a step back and you trust the people and sometimes right, and sometimes it's wrong, that's how life works, but I will say that I have not experienced traffic issues on that, right?
Right.
Uh, I don't, I never, I never voiced the opinion, because I wanted to, because I, I know where my expertise is not. But you know, you, you looked at the traffic studies and, and we had, you know, concerned customer, you know, people who had storefronts and other places and it, it generally works, I mean, I find myself every Wednesday going through there between four thirty and five, six o'clock, which is a pretty busy time, and yeah, you slow down and you, but it moves and you get in and out of there, so. I say that because it gets a good perspective, when you worry about plans and traffic and thinks whose idea that is of really kind of, you know, putting some trust in the expertise of people who are, do this for a living when it's not me, so. So I just point that out, because again, I've never had an issue and I, and I've had other people say the same thing, like it's been fine, so. Uh, last thing I will say is I have this tradition of shouting out, uh, happy birthday to my youngest, who turns double digits on Thursday, I'm going back now, I've told him that, so someday he's not watching this now. Um, someday he'll watch this and, and I can, you know, I go all the way to say embarrassing things like, you know, that's, you know, he probably says this is too sus right now, or, um, this is mid, uh, but that is my way of embarrassing him, so he stops using those stupid words in my house, um, because if I do it, if I make it uncool by doing it as the dad, then maybe. So, but, uh, happy birthday to Noah, uh, on Thursday, can't wait to celebrate with you, and that is all I have.
Oh, happy birthday, Noah.
Happy birthday.
That was wonderful. Um, all right, Elise, do you have anything? Kristoff? Matt?
I just want to just point out, uh, the February twenty-fourth meeting, we will have a joint work session with the planning commission, uh, starting at five thirty, and that'll be to go through, for the new council members here, we're revamping our zoning ordinance, because it's a little out of date, and so that'll be sort of continuing on with that process. And then the March third meeting, we're not going to have much on the agenda, we do have, we're planning on bringing back the recommendation for the architect for the municipal service building that night, so really probably short item. Um, but, uh, there's a few things that we do want to, to get accomplished at night, um, more work session type things. We'll take a tour of the public safety center so that, uh, people have a chance to be able to go through and see it if you haven't been able to see it there yet, uh, but then we'll come back and we'll finish up the strategic planning, uh, session. So we still have the implementation, uh, section of it, so staff is going to be getting together on February eighteenth to finish up sort of that process and then be bringing back to you guys, basically, here's what we'd recommend and, and we can use that as sort of a, a launching point for discussion, so.
Wonderful, all right, um, okay, uh, I just had a few things, uh, well, this week, Matt and I had the honor and privilege to go into Bloomington and attend the City Engineers Association of Minnesota. Uh, the city of Chaska won an award for the Highway forty-one project, so we got project of the year for transportation. And so that was a, it was just a wonderful event and award and, um, is that video something that's on like our website that other people can watch, or is that?
Oh, the, the video we made for that?
Yeah.
Um, I don't know if we put it up yet, but we, we, we will.
I was gonna say, that'd be really good, because there's a video that accompanies, um, kind of discussing the project and all the different components of it and the stakeholders and kind of the complexity of it, so.
Actually, maybe, maybe one thing we could do, uh, as part of the meeting on the twenty-fourth is to actually play it, uh, maybe during visitor presentation, it's only about five minutes long, but it gives people a pretty good overview of the project and, and even just going back to, you know, discussions that we had with MINDOT going back to two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen and how we got from there to here, uh, so, um, Bolton and Mink put together the video and I thought they did a great job.
Was that the one with like Dan Keport and Adams?
Yep.
I feel like it's somewhere, I mean, I've seen it, maybe, I thought it was, or maybe they sent it to us, yeah.
Yeah.
I feel like I've seen it. Oh, okay.
Play it, and I think too, it's good to recognize that it's wonderful for that, for us to be the recipient of an award like that, but I also think is in highlight of like, we were talking about transportation projects and everything, Highway forty-one, that was such a complex project and it was one that was really, you know, we had a lot of vocal, you know, community members that were, you know, it was kind of like, is this all gonna work, you know, um, and just seeing that kind of come together and come to fruition and kind of see the success of that and then see, see the, you know, awards that come about that other, uh, associations and other professionals in that industry really recognize how great, um, of a success that was, so.
There was, there's three main transportation awards that are given each year, uh, one is the American Public Works Association, the other one is the Civil Engineer Association of Minnesota, and then the other one is the Engineering Excellence Award, which is supposed to be like the, the top prize, the forty-one project received all three of them. Uh, so, and it, I mean, it went against, you know, projects in Minneapolis and state projects and so I mean, it's, it went against projects across the entire state, so it's, uh, um, you know, the, the engineers were geeking out over it a little bit when they, when they. Yeah, yeah, exactly, so.
I was hoping he'd get the engineer award.
Yeah.
Year award, and he was like, I don't want those, he didn't, but. Um, but I wanted to recognize that and then also, um, echo about the fishing contests attended on Saturday and it was, uh, it was breezy outside, um, but it was really well attended, there were a lot of people that were enjoying the festivities inside, there were a lot of people that were enjoying the festivities outside, I did a lot walking around, um, and asked people how their success was, a lot of unsuccessful fishermen, but they were, they were out there all the way till the end, so a lot of, I think people were just very excited, it had been two years since we had been able to be out on the ice for that, but, um, and it was really great to see the crowd gather when it came to drawing the raffle prizes and, and things of that nature, so, really well done by the Relief Association and all the sponsors, um, it was a great event. I also want to highlight, but I haven't, I gotta find my details, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna, say, anybody else want to talk about anything that they forgot?
Yeah, I can, I can do that while you're talking.
One thing I want to.
I just want to highlight the police department and the fire department, both today posted their monthly calls and we don't highlight that all, I, I think this is the first time the fire department did, so it was exciting, they have a similar look, which I really like consistency, so I appreciate that, but just highlighting how many calls they go on, how much work they do, twenty-six calls for difficulty breathing and chest pain for the fire department, I don't have the police one up, but, um, I just think that that was the biggest number on there and it speaks to just how often the fire department and the police department are out attending calls you wouldn't normally think of them attending and how important that is and how many lives they save, so just wanted to highlight those, check them out on Facebook, um, if you haven't.
Yeah, I think that you're right, it's really, um, it's really great to see the statistics, it's amazing how, how mu- much, uh, how many different calls and, and different things that our, um, public safety engages in in the community, so. Yeah, with the fire, or you said that you touched on the fire department.
Yeah, I didn't, I had, that's the one I had, but the police.
You know, had, like, I think one of the things that, you know, they did the three hundred and sixty-one traffic stops. You know, had, like, I think one of the things that, you know, they did the three hundred and sixty-one traffic stops, that's quite a few for the month. Um, and uh, but they're, they are working hard in the community, so that was not what I was looking to highlight. So I like to highlight this every year because this has a special spot in my heart. So the Park and Recs is hosting a sweetheart dance, it's the Little Tot Sweetheart Dance, it's on Friday. February twenty-first at the Chaska Event Center from six to seven thirty, it's five dollars per child, it's a cute little dance. Highlight this because I sadly, my son and I have aged out of that, but maybe someday they'll rewrite it. So it's not just for the, the little wee ones, but I, I get it, um.
If the marriages show up.
Maybe, that was, what, what, what my son would want, he, although he did promise me years and years ago, our last one. And, and we didn't get to go cuz it, it didn't happen for, in twenty twenty with COVID, or twenty twenty-one because of COVID, um. But in twenty twenty, with the last one we were at, he was like, mom, I'll take you to this every single year until we can't go anymore. And I don't know, maybe if I can still go, maybe he'd still take me, buddy, you know, he's gonna be ten, who knows? Yeah, he might say no to me now, but it's just such a great event, there's just a really fun DJ and it's fun to see the kids have fun. And it's just fun to do something really sweet like that with your kids, so I like to always mention it every year, it was such a fun event. But otherwise, uh, Matt, you had mentioned, our next council meeting is on February twenty-fourth, um. Due to uh, the holiday being our normal time, otherwise that wraps everything up on my end. Unless anybody has anything else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, uh, motion by Gra.
Second.
Second by Hatfield, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, all right, we are adjourned.